Okay, as I said, this is the May 10, 2021 regular meeting of Plymouth Council. Our first order of business is swearing in of our new Officer Troy Lackenmeyer. Chief, will you do that for us?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. With the impending retirement of Sergeant Bob Hager on May 31st, a vacancy has been created in the Plymouth Township Police Department. The next eligible candidate on the civil service eligibility list is Troy Lackenmeyer. Troy is 22 years old and a lifelong resident of Montgomery County. He grew up in the Limerick area and attended Springford High School. Troy later attended Delaware Valley University where he earned a degree in criminal justice, and as a student athlete, he was captain of the university's baseball team. Troy is already a certified police officer in Pennsylvania, having graduated from the Delaware County Community College Police Academy. He is joined here tonight by his mother Diane, his father Todd, and his sister Lindsay. I ask that council appoint Mr. Lackenmeyer to the position of probationary patrol officer with the Plymouth Township Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, can you move him forward? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the swearing in of Officer Troy Lackenmeyer?
Turn it.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Take a vote. Kathy Bandish?
In favor.
Dave Gannon?
In favor.
And the vice chair votes in favor. Is it done deal?
Chairman, would you maybe, Kim, may I hear you?
Oh, absolutely, please.
We're very esteemed, Ms. Bramble. A lot of people don't know that she was a pro bono of Superior Court before she joined Plymouth Council, and thank you for having the meeting tonight.
Thank you, yes. Chris Monero can't be here. He's, uh, his game ran late, so I'm vice chair, I'm taking over tonight as chair.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Raise your right hand. Raise your left hand on the ballot. Aye, Troy Lackenmeyer.
Aye, Troy Lackenmeyer.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And Plymouth Township?
And Plymouth Township.
And that I will discharge the duties of my position?
And that I will discharge the duties of my position?
With fidelity and without consideration?
With fidelity and without consideration?
To a person's race?
To a person's race?
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap?
Handicap.
Or disability?
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, uh... Karen, can you give us a badge? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Announcement that Plymouth Council held an executive session on May 3rd, 2021. We have the minutes available for approval from the workshop meeting April 5th, 2021, and the regular meeting, April 12th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Uh, so moved.
All right.
Second?
Second by Mr. Gannon, motion by Ms. Bandish. Roll call vote, Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor.
Do you want to mention that anyone who was here for the swearing in, they want to leave? They can.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not used to this. If you were here just for the swearing in and don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to leave. Or you can stay. I mean, we want you all to stay. I like a full house. If you just came to see our new Officer Lackenmeyer...
Okay, but I thought maybe it's family.
All right, I'm getting advice on your side here. If you want to stay for our police resolution, you're welcome to stay for that, because we're going to recognize National Police Week shortly. All right, here we go. Next, under administration by our solicitor, tax settlement for Metroplex West.
Thank you, Ms. Bramble. The first item we have for this evening is a proposed tax settlement between the township and Metroplex West. The appellant is the Colonial School District. The appellee is the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals, and the intervenors are Montgomery County, Plymouth Township, and Metroplex West Associates LP. The property is located at 2095 Gallagher Road, Plymouth Township, Pennsylvania, and is further identified as Tax Map Parcel 49-00-03889-20-2. The property's assessment as of January 1st, 2014 is $1,90370. On or about October 8th, 2013, after conducting a hearing on the appeal filed by the appellant, the Board of Assessment issued a no-change determination, thereby keeping the property's assessment at $1,90370. On or about October 17th, 2013, the appellant filed the appeal in the Court of Common Pleas. Based on the risks and hazards of litigation, the parties have decided it is in their best interest to settle this matter based upon the terms and conditions outlined in this settlement stipulation. Accordingly, the parties attending to be legally bound and to buy their respective clients agree to the settlement as follows. Effective January 1st, 2014, the assessment shall be $2,070,814. Effective January 1st, 2015, the assessment will remain the same. It will also remain the same as of January 1st, 2016, January 1st, 2017, January 1st, 2018, January 1st, 2019, January 1st, 2020. Effective, and it will remain the same as of January 1st, 2021. Based on the appeal, the township will owe the property owner a refund of $2,837.87. So if the board were to approve this assessment-appeal settlement, the township would be paying the property owner $2,837.87.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do I have a motion to approve this settlement?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gannon, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a roll call vote, Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, tax settlement for Metroplex East. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Ms. Bramble. The second item, again, is a tax assessment appeal involving Metroplex East. The appellant is the Colonial School District. The appellee is the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. The interveners are the property owner, Brandywine Metroplex LP, Montgomery County, and Plymouth Township. The subject property is located at 4,000 Chemical Road within Plymouth Township and is further identified as Tax Parcel Number 49-00-04391-00-6. The property's current assessment is $14,550,000. This appeal was filed in 2019 with the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals challenging the assessment of $16,830,000, beginning in tax year 2020. Based upon the risks and costs of litigation, the parties have decided it is in their best interest to settle this matter based upon the terms and conditions set forth in this appeal. For tax year 2020, effective January 1st, 2020, the... The, excuse me, the assessed amount shall remain unchanged at $14,550,000, beginning January 1st, 2021. The amount will be raised, or lowered, excuse me, to $10,876,110. The property's assessment shall remain at that for all tax years subsequent to 2021. Based on the lower assessment, the township will owe the property owner $7,682.2. And again, if council were to approve this settlement tonight, we would be reimbursing the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The settlement involving Metroplex East?
So moved.
Ms. Bandish made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
From Mr. Gannon? They're just going to take turns.
Me.
A roll call vote, Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Another tax settlement, Mr. Clark, involving Plymouth Square Shopping Center.
Thank you, Ms. Bramble. This is not a tax assessment appeal, but it is another tax settlement made between Plymouth Square Associates as the taxpayer and Plymouth Township. Plymouth Square Associates One is a Pennsylvania limited liability partnership, authorized to do business in Pennsylvania with a mailing address of 200 Bar Harbor Drive, Suite 400, West Conshohocken, Pennsylvania. The township issued an assessment of unpaid taxes to Plymouth Square on or about January 8th, 2021, using estimated capital gains on the sale of its real property located in the township. The assessment was received by the taxpayer on January 29th, 2021. The assessment issued with the notice was prepared by the township's business tax auditor as a jeopardy, as a jeopardy assessment. On or about May 14th, 2020, the taxpayer filed a request for refunds for taxes overpaid against its rental receipts due to the sale of the property, subject to the business privilege tax assessment. The township denied the refund based on the outstanding claim for unpaid business privilege tax assessment dated January 8th, 2021. The parties have agreed to enter into a settlement agreement to prevent litigation between the parties. The taxpayer does not have any other business presence in the township. After the completion of the settlement agreement, no additional taxes or tax return will be due to the township. Plymouth Square has agreed to pay, and the township has agreed to accept payment in the amount of $25,000, together with the township's retention of the refund previously requested by Plymouth Square in full and complete settlement of this matter. The township has agreed to accept, and the taxpayer has agreed to pay this amount. No further amount will be due from Plymouth Square to the township upon its acceptance of the payment of $25,000. So if we get approval of this agreement, that will resolve this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do I have a motion to approve this agreement with Plymouth Square?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Bandish, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gan, Gannon. All those in favor, Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution recognizing National Police Week. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 9th to 15th, 2021, as National Police Week, and whereas Plymouth Township desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own police officers, now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby proclaims the week of May 9th through the 15th, 2021, to be Police Week, and calls upon all citizens in this community to especially honor and show their sincere appreciation for the police officers of this township. Be it further resolved that Plymouth Township Council likewise expresses its gratitude to the men and women in uniform who uphold the law, safeguard the citizenry, and make Plymouth Township a desirable place in which to live and work. Adopted this 10th day of May, 2021, by Plymouth Township Council. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gannon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bandish. I have a roll call vote, Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. The resolution passes, and do you have any words?
Yes, thank you. Police Week takes on an even greater significance in 2021 as we recount a year fraught with numerous challenges. COVID-19 forced us to reinvent what it meant to work, shop, learn, and interact in public. National movement spurred civil unrest, pitting neighbors against one another. Unwavering under commitment to the community, our police officers remain unyielding in their effort and determination to undertake innovative means of serving our residents, businesspeople, and visitors. Just as the Plymouth Township community appreciates the sacrifices made by our officers, I too am grateful for the women and men who have put our health and welfare above their own. I'm proud of the officers who have continued to exhibit the utmost professionalism in the face of imbalanced scrutiny, and above all, I am moved by their selflessness, their sense of purpose, and the heart they've exhibited in a tumultuous year. More than any time in my 32 years as a public servant, I'm proud to serve by the side of the finest officers our nation has to offer. They are all our heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to comment, Mr. Counsel? I would just like to say, I know that our township appreciates our police officers every day of the year. I think we have probably the finest police force in the state, and I know it's been a very tough year. Our officers have really risked their lives going out during a pandemic, getting in close contact with people, and it has been an unsettling climate this past year. So thank all of you so very much. We really appreciate you every day, not just during this week.
I'd like to echo those same feelings. I know that lately we've had some traffic issues in my little development, and the presence of the Plymouth Township Police has been just absolutely wonderful and reassuring. It's so good to know we have these wonderful officers to count upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, may I present the resolution to you? We can do a photo, we'll keep our social distance in accordance with all state and federal guidelines. You can move in, Karen. We are smiling, I'm smiling. The eyes are all... And we're all vaccinated. Yeah, just putting on our masks. All right, next we have recognition for Officer of the Year, Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Police Officer of the Year 2020. Whereas Officer Mark Ransom has performed diligently and faithfully the duties and services required of him by the township of Plymouth, and whereas the performance of Officer Mark Ransom was in the highest standard of the law enforcement profession, and whereas a vote has been taken by the police department's supervisory staff to recognize Officer Mark Ransom's outstanding contributions. Now therefore be it resolved that Officer Mark Ransom is hereby commended for his diligent and valuable service. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered on the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this commendation be publicly tendered to Officer Mark Ransom, adopted this 10th day of May, AD 2021. I make a motion that we adopt this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Voting, Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you, Officer Ransom. I know that's a very high honor from your fellow officers. Did you have any words, Chief?
I would like to tell everybody just a little bit about Officer Ransom. This is a, it's a high honor. The Officer of the Year is selected by the supervisory and administrative staff of the police department each year. This year, Officer Mark Ransom's selection was a unanimous decision by all involved. Officer Ransom's been employed by the Plymouth Township Police Department since 2013. He's currently assigned to A Squad where he was recently selected to assume the duties as the officer in charge in the absence of a sergeant. Officer Ransom was also recently chosen to a temporary assignment in the investigative unit to both assist in criminal cases and to further develop his own career and skill set. Mark is assigned to the Central Montgomery County Special Weapons and Tactical Team as an operator on the entry team, and serves the department as a certified instructor in several areas. Prior to his career with the Plymouth Township Police Department, Officer Ransom was a police officer in the city of Philadelphia. He's an active member of the Pennsylvania Army National Guard, has served with both the US Army and US Marines, and has twice been deployed to combat tours in Iraq as an infantryman. And today, he's joined here by his wife Natalie of 17 years, and their daughter Amaya. So we'd like to thank Officer Ransom for everything he's done for us. He's very deserved.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very impressive. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. We're smiling. Okay, next we have recognition of our Public Works Department with National Public Works Week Resolution, and this is going to be read by Ms. Bandish.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas the public work services provided in Plymouth Township are an integral part of residents' everyday lives, and whereas the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life of Plymouth Township residents greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the members of the Plymouth Township Public Works Department are vital to the efficient operation and maintenance of public work systems and programs, including sanitary and storm sewers, streets snow removal, solid waste and recycling collection, public buildings, and all township vehicles, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities and services, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works personnel. Now therefore be it resolved that in recognition of National Public Works Week, May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, all members of the Public Works Department be commended for their performance, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered on the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to the Public Works Department, adopted this 10th day of May, 2021, by Plymouth Township Council. Christopher G. Monero, Chairman.
I make a motion that this be adopted. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor or opposed, Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. I think we all know that our Public Works Department has no equal anywhere. They are always being recognized on social media. I look, I check. So we not only have the best police department, but we most definitely have the best Public Works Department. So if we can have, do we have Mr. Loskiavo here today to come up and accept this on behalf of his fabulous Public Works Department?
Thank you, Counsel. I just wanted to say a few words if you don't mind. First of all, I just want to thank Council for their leadership, to Karen Weiss for your leadership during this COVID pandemic, for keeping us safe, doing everything they can, everything you can, to keep us safe. So we appreciate that. I also want to congratulate Troy on joining Plymouth Township. I can tell you this, that if we put together a baseball team between police and public works, we'd be darn good. I can tell you that.
I want to see that game.
But I also want to congratulate the police for your service, and Chief for your leadership as well. So, great job. I got to say that I'm so proud of our Public Works Department. They inspire me and motivate me to come to work, and I hope I have that same influence that they have on me. I'd like to share a few words. This last year and a half during this COVID pandemic, it's really been a challenge for everyone, particularly the fear of the unknown. Our Public Works identity is largely defined by its association with Plymouth Township community for the great services it provides. I am thankful and proud of our Public Works Department on the front line, was able to make a difference by continuing these great services in the community during this difficult, unprecedented time. Despite and as a result of the pandemic, I believe that together our spirit was strengthened, and we all have grown for the better. I'd like to think we have all become more compassionate, empathetic, and tolerant with each other. We seem to have a heightened understanding of what is important and truly renewed our appreciation for life's blessings that we sometimes take for granted. The Township Public Works Department Police Administration is built around men and women with class, integrity, and great character. This was brought to the forefront during this difficult time, and it's no wonder why this township stands at the top with its great service it provides to our community. We have a motto in our Public Works Department, that is, "One good deed a day." If everyone does just one, that is 27 good deeds a day. Our Public Works team lives by those words and the reason why they're so adored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I also add one comment? We get so many letters every month, every week, let alone every month, praising, but the one that touched my heart the most was from a woman who said her husband was outside struggling to change a tire in his car on the driveway, and the guys were coming along, collecting the trash, saw him struggling, stopped, got out, all of them, changed the tire, waited, got back in, and went on their way. I just thought that was a testament to the character of the employees that you have. Thank you.
We hear those stories all the time. Thank you, Chris, and all of you who work for us every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, Chris. Well, smile.
See it in his eyes.
I can see it under there. Good job.
His eyes are definitely crinkled.
Okay, any of you who would like to leave now that we've recognized our wonderful police and public works? Just hoping you would stay and hear all of that. Thank you. Thank you. You're the ones we thank. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. They are just, they are tremendous. I walk constantly, and only today have I waved to them. They're just amazing guys.
How many man of trash you pick up on my ass at work?
And they never, they never declined to do it.
Yeah.
All right, next we have East Norrton Township's Second Amendment to the Sewer Agreement, to be read by Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Bramble. The Second Amendment agreed to be effective as of the first day of March, 2021. Hereby amends that certain agreement made the 13th day of August, 1991, as amended on April 14th, 2003, by and between Plymouth Township Municipal Authority and Plymouth Township Bodies, Politic, and Corporate of the Township of Plymouth County of Montgomery, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the East Norrton Township Municipal Authority and East Norrton Township Board of Supervisors, likewise Body Politic and Corporate of the Township of East Norrton, County of Montgomery, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The Plymouth Township Municipal Authority has been dissolved. The East Norrton Township Municipal Authority has been dissolved. The parties here too acknowledge and agree that the above-mentioned intermunicipal agreement is in full force and effect, binding in accordance with its terms, with the sole modification that the properties identified on Addendum Exhibit B have been added to the conveyance system, and that annual adjustments have been made and shall continue to be made in accordance with Paragraph IV of the agreement. This document may be signed in duplicate by facsimile signature and shall constitute one and the same document in witness whereof intending to be legally bound. one and the same document in witness whereof intending to be legally bound and here, legally bound hereby. The parties here too have cause to be affixed their corporate seals duly attested by the proper corporate officers in each Plymouth Township Council by Karen Bramlett, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the Sewer Agreement?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bandish, and the motion was by Mr. Gannon. We'll have a vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a sewer connection request by Mr. Anthony Santangelo, who resides at nine oh six White's Road in Plymouth Township. Mr. Santangelo has a failing septic system. He is moving to sewer, a more environmentally safe and desirable move for the township. It's a very expensive project that he's undertaking with engineering and excavation and installation. Mr. Santangelo is asking the township to waive the sewer connection fee in the amount of three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. This is something that is typically waived for residents, not businesses, but residents who are moving from septic to sewer. May I have a motion to waive the connection fee on behalf of nine oh six White's Road?
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Bandish, second by Mr. Gannon. Roll call vote, Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, we have an extension request under subdivision and land development, and this will be read by Ms. Bandish.
Yes, we've received a letter from John Scauto asking for an extension for the subdivision, requesting an additional ninety days until nine seven twenty-one. I make a motion that we allow this.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And this is an extension, this is for, this is for one, two, three, four?
That was, it was, yes, that was mine.
All right, next, escrow release for projects under construction.
Well, we, the Cold Point Village?
Here's an extension for Cold Point.
Conditionally approved.
Oh, right, an extension, sorry. I read it wrong. I can't see, this mask creeps up into my eyeballs. Sorry. But it is cooler than a cloth mask, I will say that. All right, this is an extension request by Sal Peon Jr. involving Cold Point Village Station, requesting an extension until July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. I make a motion that we grant the extension. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bandish. Vote, Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor.
Want me to take this one?
Sure. Next is an escrow release request for one thirty-five Pleasant Road. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This is a communication from Lonnie Manai of Woodron Associates in reference to one thirty-five Pleasant Road. This is escrow release number five being requested. This time, based on field observations of work completed to date, we find that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars. By releasing this amount, the total account balance for the project will be reduced to forty-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty cents, and I make a motion that we approve this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we'll have a vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Or Vice Chair, technically. Sorry.
You are the chairwoman tonight.
I am the chair tonight, there you go. We were wondering what would happen if we had a dissent and it was a vote of two to one, but luckily that's not going to happen tonight. We do have a quarrel. Next is an announcement of zoning hearings. Mr. Gannon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. The zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township hearing on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one will be held at seven P.M. virtually via Zoom. Login details will be available at plymouthtownship.org and the township's Facebook account prior to the hearing. The following applications will be heard. From Fayou Diophao on an application for a variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number Three Four Two as amended, Article Nineteen, Section One Nine Zero Nine dot E. Variance requested is as follows: To allow fence within the front yard setback. The property is located at one oh two Chancery Place in a B residential zoning district. Anthony and Caitlin Altamere on an application for variances from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Three Four Two as amended, Article Five, Sections Five Oh Two, Point F, and Five Oh Two, Point G, and Article Nineteen, Section One Nine Zero Eight, Point One. The variance requested are as follows: To allow twenty-five point seven eight percent impervious coverage, where a maximum of twenty-five percent is allowed, and to allow seventy-four point two two percent green space, where a minimum of seventy-five percent is required; to allow twelve by fourteen shed, where a maximum of twelve by twelve is allowed. The property is located at one eight zero six Graves Road in an A residential zoning district. And the Silver Springs Martin Luther?
Oh, that's been continued, I'm sorry.
I know, but I think we still read this, correct?
I, I think you should, and in light of the discussion last week where the council is contemplating having my office oppose, I think it would be appropriate to have a motion authorizing us to appear and oppose on behalf of the township.
So I'll read out the notice.
Yes.
It has already been postponed, but this allows, okay. All right, the third notice is on the Martin Luther Sking, Martin Luther School Doing Business as Gemma Services. On an application for an appeal from the, from the determination of the Plymouth Township zoning officer dated April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, that prior Plymouth Township zoning hearing board decisions do not permit children to attend the school past the eighth grade, or in the alternative, a modification to the Plymouth Township zoning hearing board decisions dated August second, nineteen seventy-one, and September twenty-fifth, nineteen seventy-two, to allow education of children in grades K through twelve, or in the alternative, a special exception from the Plymouth Township zoning ordinance Three Four Two as amended, Article Four, Section Four Zero Zero, Point C, Point One. Special exception requested is as follows: To allow the education of children in the grades K through twelve. The property is located at five twelve Township Line Road in a double A residential zoning district. Persons with a disability who wish to participate in the public hearing and require an auxiliary aid, service, or other accommodation to participate in the hearing should contact Plymouth Township at six one zero two three three zero five five four.
Now, first, that has been postponed.
It, it has been postponed from the May seventeenth hearing and will be heard June?
Twenty-first.
June twenty-first.
And, and council had asked extensions so we could think about it more, think whether we want to oppose it currently. I don't know if any of you know where the Martin Luther School is, but it is off of Township Line Road. Just before you hit Warrior Apache, those roads, before you hit Walton, at least coming from my house before you hit it. And they want to go from, currently they have children up to eighth grade, and they want to take children, young adults, up to twelfth grade, and they provide both educational and in some instances residential services for children. So we want to, time to consider what they're actually contemplating if it's going to be residential and education. So in the event that council does decide that they want to oppose this at the June zoning hearing, I'd like to make a motion that we would hire Mr. Clark's firm, Rudolph Clark, to represent us in opposition to this variance.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll have a vote, Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you. Next, an announcement for Plymouth Township Day. We're back after COVID, and you know, there'll be safety protocols in place as needed to keep everyone safe with dicstacine, but that will be held on Saturday, June the twelfth, from ten A.M. to two P.M. It will be at the East Plymouth Valley Park. There will be vendors and community organizations, and rides and food. So please, if you can, come out on Saturday, June the twelfth, and see everybody. Been a long time. Next, we have an announcement for the Service and Devotion Monument by Ms. Bandish.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Service and Devotion Monuments, individuals are able to purchase bricks and pavers to honor a loved one who has served. Three sizes are available: Four by eight, twelve by twelve, and twenty-four by twenty-four. They start at seventy-five dollars. Pavers have the option for a logo at an additional charge, and the available logos are Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, and the Plymouth Township Police, the Plymouth Community Ambulance Association, the Plymouth Fire Company, and the Harmonville Fire Company. We are still seeking monetary donations from businesses who are interested in becoming a supporter. In return for a donation, a laser etched granite plaque will be displayed prominently on the three-tiered donor wall. The purchase of bricks and pavers is ongoing, and orders will be placed several times a year. For more information and for the order forms, all you have to do is visit www.plymouthcommunitycenter.org, or you can just call the Greater Plymouth Community Center.
Thank you, Ms. Bandish. Miscellaneous business, Citizen Board vacancy announcements. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. All residents wishing to serve on these citizen boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their intent to the Township Manager, seven hundred Bellwater Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA, one nine four six two, provide email, kys@plymouthtownship.org. The following citizen board positions are open. There's three positions on the Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board, one on the Historical Architecture Review Board, and one on the Human Relations Commission.
Thank you. Would any members of the audience like to make comments? Yes, please, come up and, yes, come up to the podium, state your name and where you live, please.
Carol Betham, five nineteen Old Elm Street, Plymouth Township. A year ago, I brought up the subject of a stop sign on New Elm Street and Lake Street.
Okay.
There are seven stop signs on Caldwell Lane. I'm only asking for one stop sign. There is one on the other side of the Blue Route, on Concha Hocken Road. I am on New Elm Street.
Okay.
Can I ask why nothing's been done or anything?
I think that was addressed, Ms. Betham. Chief, do you remember your audit of that area?
Honestly, I don't remember the specifics, but I will look into it, and I'll get back to you tomorrow. I think the phone number for you, I just don't know what the, what the study showed. It escapes me right now.
Do you remember, Ms. Weiss?
No, seven stop signs on Caldwell Lane, and I stop at all of them, and nobody comes out the opposite direction. It just, it's like discriminating against stuff standing coming in.
She's in the Concha Hocken.
I hate to say that.
No, but after the meeting, I'll give you the phone number for you, and then they will just make sure again, and I will hopefully contact you tomorrow, and we'll discuss it further, and see exactly what the issue is.
Okay.
Yes, so Chief Merceadias will just need to go back and look at the study that he did and refresh his recollection.
Okay, I really hear what you said, but that's all right.
I'm sorry. The chief will get back to you. He, he just doesn't know offhand. He does a lot of studies for stop signs and that sort of thing, so he reviewed.
Okay, one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
In January, you spoke about people being subsidized and their taxes.
Subsidized?
It was in January. It's the only first meeting I ever got of all you on television. But some of you were very, a little disturbed because some people are subsidized.
For sewer?
What?
Is it for the sewer system?
Why are people subsidized?
For what, taxes?
Taxes.
Real estate taxes?
They, you didn't talk.
I'm not aware of any subsidy for real estate taxes.
Okay, well, whatever, it was, Ms., the baby right here, Karen, that spoke about it.
I know that there was, I guess, well, not this year, last year we had a, an extension because of COVID on paying taxes. I think a question was asked whether or not any township employees were get subsidized. Nobody that I'm aware of.
No, it wasn't the, Karen, Karen, I think it was the sewer.
Oh.
Like Concha Hocken Borough, possibly.
I think it was like the people who live on the, near Concha Hocken in the sewer.
Yeah.
Oh, the expenses are greater.
Oh.
Cost more to process the sewage from, it goes to the Concha Hocken Sewer District? Do you think we're talking about that?
Now, it was just, if you look at the tape about January, it's maybe, I guess it's a far way. It would, I'd just like to know how, why some people do get subsidized in their taxes.
There, there are no subsidies for taxes. Everybody in the township is paying the same amount of taxes on their property based on what their property is assessed on.
That's Plymouth Township tax.
Plymouth Township taxes.
It's not the school tax.
It's not the school taxes, it's Plymouth Township taxes. What the discussion might have been was that since we send some of our sewage to the borough of Concha Hocken Authority, and we have a, a flat rate for many of our customers, that some people are not paying the Concha Hocken rate, and, and in effect, it works out as a, as they're being subsidized by all the other ratepayers. But it's not taxes, it's for, it's for sewer.
Okay.
And that's because Concha Hocken takes a fair amount of the sewage from Plymouth Township.
Thank you.
Any comments from any other members of the audience tonight? Sure, come on up, please. And this is, you all know, Mr. Chris Monero is actually our chair and has joined us.
Sorry, duty calls.
Yes, but he is our baseball coach, and we haven't.
My name is Anati Martin. I live at thirteen Blue Ridge in Plymouth Meeting. So, right now, with Chemical Road being closed, people are using Sierra and Blue Ridge all the time cutting through, not stopping at that stop sign, and then speeding by. As summer approaches, there's going to be more kids out. I have two kids, and I worry about their safety, like, do I have to constantly monitor them, making sure that no car comes speeding through? Is there a way we could have like speed bumps in that area, or even signs that say twenty-five miles per hour? Because even though that there is police present, there's not always that police present. And I'm more worried about my children's safety, my neighbors' children's safety, and people riding their bikes in our neighborhood. People cut through, don't care, and we need something done to protect everybody.
I, I feel your pain. I live in your neighborhood. I'm on King's Road, so I've been working with Chief Merceadias to have a bigger police presence, and, and I've, I've noticed a difference. I remember walking down Yellowstone, I do a lot of walking in the neighborhood, and a car passed me at sixty miles per hour, and I was furious. I wish I could have gotten, flagged them down. So the, the chief has, he may want to address this, but he has been working very much with the community to try and cut down on exactly the kinds of behaviors that you're talking about.
But even when there's no police present, like, people are going to speed. They see police, they're not going to speed, so when they're not there, how do we prevent speeding? I'm saying, let's get speed bumps in certain areas. There's temporary ones that you can put take up during the winter time. We just need them to protect everybody. Because I could pull out and people like blare their horns at me, I'm going to twenty-five, I have people tailing me, at one time somebody swerved in front of me to get through. Don't want to get into an accident, just trying to leave to go to work.
Well, you know what, that's something that we can, we, I can check into and see if that's possible. I, I can't answer for certain at this point, but we'll check into it.
All right. Thank you.
Speeding is a real problem in a lot of our residential neighborhoods, and, and people do run through the stop signs, and they do speed, and they do get. do run through the stop signs, and they do speed, and they do get annoyed if you stop. You know, I've experienced, I live on Butler Pike, so forget that. I mean, I'd love to clock people there, I don't know where they go. But I know when I'm in residential neighborhoods, people do get annoyed with me because I stop. So, we will look into that. I know speed bumps are always controversial, as you say, in the winter for public works. There are those that are removable. They also make a lot of noise, so when you have the landscape trucks and UPS and FedEx coming through, and they go over those speed bumps, the people who live in front of the speed bumps sometimes wonder which they would rather have. And it's not just the people cutting through from Chemical Road, but I know some people complain to me that it's the people who live there.
Oh, I've seen all that.
They blow through a stop sign, and, and three doors down, they turn into their driveway, so.
I've, I've had so many people tailgating me, because I do twenty to twenty-five through the, and my, my foot's hovering over the brake. I know a kid could dart out at any time. And I've had people who I know are my neighbors on my tail annoyed that I'm moving so slowly. I just, I don't care. I tend to go slower. But, but we'll see what else we can do to make it, because I, I totally understand what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ben Egan. I live at fourteen Blue Ridge Road, along with my wife, Lauren, and we have two, two young kids, uh, seven and four years old. Just to kind of liberate what Matt had discussed, um, on a regular basis, I can take the kids to school in the morning, and just leaving my driveway is quite a hassle. Because I'm always on the lookout that I'm going to get into offender better just leaving my house. It's just an ongoing thing of people coming off of Butler Pike to, uh, basically just save two minutes of time when they can take the light at Butler and Germantown Pike. I often see them cutting corners, coming into the neighborhood at a high rate of speed. Then they speed down, uh, uh, Blue Ridge Road, uh, and they don't even come to a stop. It's always a roll-through, and I am highly concerned for my safety and my wife and my kids' safety, and just everyone else who's, who just lives in the neighborhood. I don't know if there's a way of identifying who all lives in the neighborhood and just making sure that it's just, you know, us neighbors using that between, uh, Blue Ridge and Sierra. Just a lot of frustration, so. And then it's, again, from Sierra coming up, people rolling the stop sign there as well.
I, I know that there are three in our area, three intersections that are really bad, and I, I kind of went and talked with the sergeant in traffic about Blue Ridge and Sierra, because I said, this is also, in addition, a school bus stop. There's Harmon, uh, the Harmony Keys, there's a few others, but that's one of three that I thought were the most crucial to look at. So they have highlighted them, but I will revisit it with them. But we, we, as far as I understand, we cannot put up any kind of signage or enforce any kind of signage that says, no, through traffic, they're public streets. So you cannot limit it to, well, this is our development, so only we can drive through here, but I, I, I feel your pain, and I totally understand, and I've watched the same thing happen over and over again. But, you know, people are going to be able to use the roads, but we can at least try and really strictly enforce that stop sign, make sure that the speed is consistent with what's posted, and that the stop sign is honored.
Yes, and I, I know, um, we've had, uh, I guess, speed monitors put in the neighborhood before, um-
With the, with the lights saying you're traveling this late, yeah.
Yeah, uh, what has been some of the results from, from those?
Well, um, I, I know that, that Chief Merciades was checking on, because another is little in cars, another area of concern for me, because it's right there at Ridge Park, and, yeah, I mean, there are babies, you know, that's K to three. And to me, they're nothing more than, than babies, so, um, but I know that, and I will check and see, because I know he was checking into the feasibility of, of putting, like, some type of a sign like that, or, and maybe we can look at it for some other areas that are important.
I, I, we also have a blink camera out on, at the, that captures the front of our driveway, but also a little bit of, of that road and the stop sign there. I don't know if any of that video could be helpful, um, to the council.
For running the stop signs, I don't know that it can, you can calibrate speed from it, but-
Are, are citizens allowed to set up additional cameras to record license plates of people who are traveling through, rolling, you know, violating, pulling stop signs, speeding, that sort of thing?
Chief Merciades is going to speak to that.
One thing I would offer, sorry to get my back to all you people, um, I did offer to a, a young lady, I think there were a couple of people that emailed me, we went back and forth, and I did offer, and, and the offer stands, if you'd like to get your neighbors together, uh, where we could discuss it. I, we did do a study, I'd share the study with you. We could talk about your ideas, uh, you might have some things we haven't thought of. Uh, there are some issues with speed bumps, and again, it's not up to the police department. We basically make a recommendation, um, and, and, and give our best answers for our safety and, and how plausible something is. But I'm happy to meet with the neighbors. We can do it, uh, we've got the community center, we've got the police department. I would ask, actually, that you, um, get as many of your neighbors that are interested in coming, and, and we'll talk about it. I mean, we want the same thing that you all do, but unfortunately, I mean, I'm, I'm even listening now, and I, I do have answers to a lot of the questions. Some of them you might not care for, but it's all based on data that we, we compile. But some of the ideas that I'm hearing about cameras and things, there are interesting ideas that we might be able to work out, um, and I'd like to hear some of those. So I'd be happy if, if any one of you wants to be a point person, um, and email me, and I'll be happy to set up a meeting where we can all discuss this and come to some kind of solution. Because you're right, it's scary, we're all about kids, it's, it needs to be taken care of. We've pretty much tried everything that we can think of that, that we think will work, but I'm always happy to listen, and we can go back and forth, and then fine-tune it till we find a solution, so. I, I welcome anybody getting in contact with me, and we'll, um, we'll set something up, if that works for the neighbors. Okay.
And I'll be glad to work with you gentlemen about that, with that, too.
And just one thing, um, I have noticed the police activity in the neighborhood, especially just on a stakeout, just, um, sitting and monitoring the traffic, so, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
John, I have a quick question for you. And I, I don't know if, if, put you on the spot with this, but I haven't really seen what's down there, and I know we're at the, we battle with everyone's GPSs and, you know, the routes that they're being given, but would there be any way to request, especially in the short term with a lot of the increased traffic, assuming due to chemical road closure, to request any more signage from PennDOT in terms of, like, detour signage, or pointing, trying to point traffic in different directions? Or is, or maybe there's enough out there already, I just, I don't know.
I can certainly talk to them. It was like pulling teeth, just working on Chemical Road. I mean, most of that was our public works and, and our signs, um, and then they disappeared. I mean, not the signs, but PennDOT. So I will certainly try, we always reach out to them, and I don't want to lay it all on them, I know that they've got the whole state to take care of, but, um-
Sure.
And we'll see what else we have.
Yeah, or us, too, I mean, any way to, and I go, most, most local people, they know where to go, but, you know-
Actually, our public works has always offered to make up signs that we needed, so we surely can make up our own signs, I just have to find out the legality of, of setting up our own detours. But I will look into all that tomorrow and, and see, uh, something else I'll bring to the table as a suggestion, whatever we come up with.
Thank you.
John, is it, is I, maybe I'm under misinformation, but I thought that this, if it's a state road, they could only detour to another state road. Could we opt to issue, like, a detour to a local road?
Yeah, I don't want to give you misinformation, I have to find out for sure, but that's something I can easily get the answer to by tomorrow.
Okay.
And I will let you know also.
All right, Mr. Schickling, will you come up, state your name and your address, please?
Richard Schickling from one eleven Boulder Road. Just like to reiterate, my neighbors, I live at the opposite end of the development, and I have a straight stretch of street in front of my house that regularly is a Speedway. One of the principal speeders is one of our neighbors, and, that lives at, uh, Blue Ridge and Yellowstone, that has two pickup trucks in the driveway. Can never do anything, they don't want to be told anything, they're just, they're going to be doing what they want to do, and that's it. The other one is the FedEx trucks, FedEx trucks, that are not delivering on the block, floor it, going down Boulder Road, getting between one stop and the next stop. Yeah, they have to get their deliveries out, but they shouldn't obey the speed limit. There are a lot more cut-throughs anymore, uh, we've all seen it. Kathy near gets run over a whole bunch of times when she's out walking, I've seen her having to dodge the cars. You know, it's, uh, and it's not just the neighbors, it's, there's a lot of people looking for a different way. And, uh, as I spoke with Karen, uh, about changing the light timing on Germantown Pike to try to help the pass-through time make it easier, and the other light timing at Ridge Pike and Butler Pike, so that we can make our turns and get through the light. It, the light seems unfairly timed to favor Ridge Pike when the traffic is backed up all the way to the Liberty Gas Station and beyond.
And beyond, yes, even on weekends, I've-
And, and we can't get out of the development, so. And, uh, changing the subject, I want to thank the police and the public works. We really get our money's worth in this township.
Oh, yes.
The public works does an excellent job. Last year, they didn't know what they were picking up when they were picking up the trash. They were all doing their job well, and we had excellent services all year long. Thank you very much.
Period.
Okay. And you're right, the pandemic was basement and garage cleaning time, and our public works did backbreaking work, for sure, and, and our police and public works never knew what they were coming into with all these packages and COVID. Chief, are those roads, the traffic light, who controls that at, uh, Chemical Road, which is so fit, rarely used now, Chemical and Germantown, and then the other one up at Ridge and Butler?
Again, I'd have to make sure, but I'm pretty sure we've researched those, and we've had to talk with PennDOT, and they won't do anything without a study, and they won't even do a study unless there's certain criteria, man, so many accidents, accidents with injuries. But I will check them again anyway, just to be sure that that's the case.
And I know the stoplight at, uh, Butler and Germantown is mostly on White Marsh property.
PennDOT's in charge of all signal timing.
Okay.
Even though some of the signals on borders could be at White Marsh, they couldn't help me, we, we, we need towns on it, but both townships are always listed on all, they have a traffic signal plan.
Okay.
PennDOT's in charge of the timing, and any change has to be approved by PennDOT.
So that would be true for Ridge and Butler Pike, too?
All traffic signals in the Commonwealth.
Okay.
For that, how much time each site gets.
Right.
Right.
So we could, we could make a request to say, we'd like a study done at Ridge and Butler Pike, for instance, that's what's backing all of the extra traffic. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an incredible amount of extra traffic at times coming up Butler Pike, but, which, you know, people don't have a choice. So, eh, the, the backup is, is on a Saturday afternoon is just, yeah, you don't even try and get out of the development. Most of the time, if you do, then they won't let you even back in, they block the intersection. You can't even turn back into home. So it's, um, that would be a really good one for a study.
I'll always let you out, Kathy. And Richard, and Matt, and John. All right, are there any other, uh, audience comments? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank everybody for sticking around.
Thank you.
Good job, Karen.